That's great, now we're begging. All right, we'll call the tonight's Casa Grande City Council meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for being here. We have, uh... Oh, okay. We have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And tonight, we have Pastor Paul Elgin from the Casa Grande Presbyterian Church, so please remain standing after the invocation, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, please pray with me. Father God, we come before you tonight as a people in a hurry, always rushing for the next thing, so let's just take a moment of silence now and again to thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for this meeting tonight, and we ask that you help us do your work. And let us think of all the people standing here, ready to do your work, and ask that you will be especially close to all of us, hear us as we pray in our hearts. Father God, thank you for our first responders, all of those who put their own safety second to ours. Protect them either in battle or emergency or peace, and give them courage in their work and remember your righteousness in their decisions and their actions. Father, in your mercy, thank you for the rain we had this weekend. Father God, inspire us to think of just one or two particular friends or acquaintances that might need your mercy, or healing, or inspiration, and ask that you will help us support them and help them know the good news. We remember all Americans today and the freedom you have given us. Thank you for those who have fought to preserve it. Thank you for it becoming even more of a reality on June 19th, 1865. Help us preserve freedom and to truly make our nation one nation under God. Father God, thank you that you listen to all of our prayers, spoken and unspoken. Now guide us in your will as we attempt to do your work, and help us give thanks and pledge our loyalty and our support for our nation and for each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me as we take advantage of being able to pledge allegiance to our good flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, let the roll call show. All members of the council are here, with the exception of Mr. Matt Herman. Someone like to give him an excuse? Okay.
Second.
Mr. Powell moved for approval, and I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, please note Matt is excused. Next item, we have several minutes for approval here. Mr. Powell?
Council chair, here we go. Okay. Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the City Council regular meeting minutes from June 6, 2022, as they're presented. And that we accept for the record the minutes from May 5, 2022, for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that was held on May 5, 2022. And for the record, we accept for the record the Casa Grande Youth Commission meeting minutes from April 16, 2022, as presented, and that concludes.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the claims from June 1st to the 14th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay. Note one abstention. Four is enough for approval? Um... Okay. Oh, five. Oh, I forgot to count myself. Okay, thank you for that point of clarification. My glasses on, I can't see. All right, meeting agenda approval for tonight. Does anybody have any changes or additions, or any issues with it? No changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda is approved as presented. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to consent agenda items, which item G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there any changes, or anyone want to pull anything off? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no one, then I'll... Call for an approval.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item H, which is our public comments section. This is an opportunity for the public, anyone here, to address the council. Just as a reminder, if you, when you approach the podium, please state your name and your address. And please remember you have three minutes to state a statement or whatever you'd like to address with the council. But remember that it's not an agendized item, so therefore there'll be no further discussion on the item. We can give direction to staff to follow up at a later time, which we usually do if it's necessary. So if there's... I do have one speaker card here. Bruno? Are you here? Do you would like to speak?
Can I call him out?
Yes, sir. No worries, you can use that podium to hang on to.
Yeah. Thank you for the podium. All right, I've, I've met the mayor, and...
And Bruno, do me a favor for the records. Would you state your full name and your address?
My name is Bruno Colanchi. I thought I was gonna be here temporary for a while. I'm actually at Caseras Court at the Siegel Suites. Been there for five years. I wasn't planning to be here that long, but I've been here about that long. I'm tethered to LA, keep going back and forth to LA because of my wife's condition. We go to LA because of her medical stuff, so this was the fastest place to go, all right? So I'm here for right now. Maybe for the future, I don't know. So, um, should I start speaking?
Yes, go, please.
All right, so a couple of issues have surfaced on feeding the cats over at Berth Park. Just to let you know, there's no law in Arizona on feeding the cats, and it's the humane thing to do. But lately, there's been a couple of issues on feeding the cats, and a couple of people have told me that I'm trespassing on the park. And I tell them there's no such thing as trespassing in a public park. So the issues I have are, do we have a law, I guess, in Casa Grande that's contrary to the law of the state of Arizona? You know? And, uh, you know, I've contacted the Humane Society and everything like that, so I continue to feed the cats, and I don't like to be harassed by the PD about it, so, just to let you know. That's basically my statement.
Okay.
All right? So do the humane thing. Let's not be the inhumane society, right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll keep the mayor updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the floor is still open, so if there's anyone else who would like to address, if you didn't fill out a card, it's okay. I will allow walk-ins, so to speak, walk-ups. All right. Seeing none, then we'll close the floor, close the public comments section of our meeting tonight, and we'll move to item J. No, we're gonna move to K, because there's no I or J. So K, which is our ordinance and resolutions, we have one. It's K1. And Kevin, this is your baby?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the update to the City of Casa Grande access management guidelines. Access management practices are used to establish the desired level of access control on a roadway, to help maintain capacity of that public roadway, as well as ensure safety for the public as they travel down that roadway. Access management is regulated through legal, administrative, and technical strategies that are available to the public jurisdiction under its police powers and authority to maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the jurisdiction's residents. Our current access management guidelines were originally adopted in 2001, and then they were carried forward into our smaller transportation study that was approved in July of 2007. It recognized the requirements of modern roadway networks and growth for the city. The updated guidelines provide a contemporary framework for reducing project review and approval times, and establish a rationale, consistent framework for assuring adequate access is available to serve proposed land use while protecting critical roadway functions. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dwayne and Amy to provide a real short presentation and provide some additional information.
So you're gonna hand it over to the experts?
Absolutely.
The real expert is Amy from Wilson and Company, and she's going to be doing most of the talking.
We know Amy.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Dwayne, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back here one more time. I know I was here not too long ago, and we did a pretty comprehensive review of the new access management standards. And so tonight, I'm just gonna take an opportunity to remind you a few of the highlights as you think about this resolution today. So as Kevin mentioned, access management is really an opportunity to preserve the intended function of a particular type of roadway. And as you increase the number of access points on a roadway, you result in a decrease in the volume of traffic that it can serve. So if you think about a freeway as sort of one extreme, right? You have very limited access through grade-separated interchanges versus a local roadway, which has a series of residential driveways, as an example. And, and so between those, obviously, you can see you could carry more traffic on a freeway versus a local roadway. The other point in benefit of access management is that as you decrease the number of access points in a corridor, you're essentially decreasing the number of conflict points that could result in potential crashes. And crashes are something that, again, can sort of reduce the amount of traffic that can be carried. If you've got a crash on a facility, obviously, you've got some restrictions, and you've got, you know, a reduced ability to carry a volume of traffic. So we've talked about these things before. Last time we met, we, we gave an example essentially of a, of a corridor. We took a sample corridor, and we said, "Let's look at that corridor on the top with access management." So you can see there's a fewer number of access points in that corridor on the top. That same corridor on the bottom would be if there were an unlimited number of potential driveway points where vehicles could enter or exit that corridor. And as you can see, as we sort of scroll through this corridor, same corridor, same desired level of traffic activity, the traffic is flowing much better, much more freely in the example on the top, where there are access management standards in place versus that corridor on the bottom. Actually, in that same corridor, without access management during that same period of time, about 5,300 vehicles were served. When you introduce access management, same corridor, same amount of time, 8,900 vehicles. So we're looking at an increase of over 50% in carrying capacity. We're also looking at a decrease in travel time. So without access management, it took the average vehicle nine minutes to travel through that corridor. With access management standards imposed, it reduced that travel time to six minutes. And I believe this is consistent, as, as we spoke the last time I was here, with one of council's objectives of increasing, basically, capacity and decreasing travel time on, on major roadways within the city. In a nutshell, and I know we, we talked about these a bit at length the last time I was here, but the, the access management standards and the new guidelines are slightly more restrictive in the past. Just as an example, on a principal arterial, so an example of that would be McCartney Road or Pert Road, the old guidelines allowed driveways every 200 to 275 feet. The new standards would say that full access, so in other words, a point of where vehicles are allowed to make right turns and left turns in and out, would be limited to a quarter-mile spacing. And then at that 660 feet, or roughly eighth mile, you would permit vehicles to enter and exit through right-ins and right-outs only. Similarly, for a minor arterial, previously, it was 150 to 230 feet. Now, again, because it's an arterial, recommending a quarter-mile minimum is desirable, 450 feet for right-in, right-out. On the collector and local roadways, which are intended to provide a greater level of access to abutting properties, the previous standards had not defined any requirements for those particular types of facilities. Now we're recommending 150 feet minimum, but 300 feet preferred for full access on a collector roadway, and 30 feet minimum on local roadways. Also accompanying the access management standards is some guidelines for traffic impact analyses. And a couple of things that have changed. First of all, they, they were further customized for Casa Grande. A major thing was that the threshold in trip activity and triggering a traffic impact analysis changed from 100 trips per day to 100 per hour. So that actually is saying you have to have a higher level of development activity in order to require a TIA. 100 trips per day is just about every type of development would require a traffic impact analysis, and that can sometimes be a bit excessive. The study area extents now will change based on your level of trip activity. If you're a smaller development, you're gonna look at a closer area in proximate to your development. If you're a larger development, generating a lot of trips, that area is gonna expand, because those trips have the potential to impact a greater area within your transportation network. And then obviously, it's gonna look not only at site driveways, but also at off-site intersections. Now, one of the things that we talked about, right, these are standards. These are what we're trying to achieve as a city in a perfect world, but we recognize that that's not going to happen in every circumstance. And so through that traffic impact analysis process, there's an opportunity for developments to work with the public works and the city traffic engineer to make exceptions to those standards, so that they are achieving access for their property while still maintaining the integrity and safety of the adjacent roadway system. And I guess one of the things that I'll mention is even beyond that ability to prepare those traffic impact analyses and work with public works and the city traffic engineer, I believe just by, is it city code?
Not exactly.
Not exactly. So Dwayne's an expert on this, but my understanding is they would still have an opportunity, even beyond that, to go and, and speak with Planning and Zoning Committee, as well as City Council, who would ultimately be making the decisions on approval of their access.
So they have the right of appeal to Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council?
And so those traffic impact analysis guidelines include a checklist that makes sure that the developers have a clear understanding of the information that they're going to be required to discuss with the city, so that everybody is presenting the same information, everybody, every developer has the same expectations, that the city clearly understands the key aspects of the development as they progress through that TIA process. And with that, I will just open it up to any additional questions you may have thought of since the last time I was here.
I do have a question. I'm just curious, in, in the plan itself, is there some, is there some maintenance of flexibility? I mean, does it have to go to an appeal? Does it have to, I mean, can the, you know, can your department deal with it before it gets to City Council? Is there, is there some flexibility in it?
Sure. So we've been using these guidelines for quite a while, just to see how they're working out. And occasionally, something comes up that we need to make a decision other than what the guidelines say. Some examples of some developments, it's gone and sits on a corner, and they don't have a quarter mile, or even maybe the 660 feet. So we work with them to still get access in what we feel is a safe manner. So we can do that without elevating it to Planning and Zoning Commission or the council. In fact, I've never seen anything get elevated to City Council or Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we have, you guys have flexibility to, to work with the development community, because it's, obviously, you know, we need to work hand-in-hand with them, we need to be cooperative, yet we also need to manage them, and I understand that, so I just, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, what I always try to do, always say is, we try to say yes, not no, as much as we can.
Right. Good answer. Thank you. Lisa?
Well, and you're right, we wanna work with the developers, but of course, one of the biggest concerns lately with all the growth is congestion on the roads and everything. So I'm just happy, like I, I mentioned this the last time you were here, to make sure that we're updating the standards and, you know, making sure we have a plan in place and guidelines moving forward with the growth. Sorry, my computer fell here, so. But thank you, Amy, for coming again.
Anyone else?
That was a pretty thorough presentation. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you both. Any other comments, Kevin? Okay.
No, sir.
All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5427. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the updated City of Casa Grande access management standards.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5427 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to our public meetings, public hearings. This is item L. The first one on docket tonight is L1, public hearing and consider approval of resolution number 5428. And an ordinance, too, so these will be considered together, but we'll vote on them separately.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Similar to the, the management access standards that you just heard, we presented the changes to the parking regulations to City Council at a recent study session. Staff took the comments that we, we received from you during that study session and made some slight revisions to the code to reflect the input that you provided. And then this evening, we have the final revision to chapter 1756 of our zoning code that replaces our existing regulations with these new ones. The actual... Let's see if I can get this to move forward here. There we go. Thank you. The actual ordinance was attached to your RCA. I'm not going to go through it line by line, but I just wanted to give you kind of a high-level review on what the changes really involved. So some of the objectives was to really to limit the amount of paved parking that's provided for each land use, to make sure that it's adequate, but not really excessive. We wanted to reduce the following adverse impacts associated with paved parking, urban heat island effect, which we certainly can appreciate during the summer months here, increased stormwater runoff, and increased an unnecessary development cost. As you can see from the photo in front of you, with each land use, there's really a tremendous amount of land that's dedicated to paved parking in our urban area. It's probably more land in parking than any other use, right? And so we, you know, it's important to have enough, but as you can see in these photos, we probably have too much in many of these examples as well. Some other objectives was to really encourage the provision of electrical vehicle charging stations. We encourage it, but was not mandatory, but we definitely created some guidelines for those who might want to provide electric vehicle charging, to provide parking for bicycles, scooters, and other alternative modes of transportation, create design requirements for specific uses with drive-up lanes and pickup lanes, implement various general plan, 2030 action steps, simplify the requirements, make them easy to understand. We've introduced graphics in several of the sections to help understand the, the design concepts, update the requirements to reflect best current practices, and of course, reference our newly updated access management standards. The 2030 general plan, in fact, does set forth a number of action steps related to updating our parking regulations, and you can see them there, many of which, though, were really to talk about having unique parking requirements for the downtown versus the other parts of the city, where, where much, where on-street parking is a... other parts of the city where much, where on-street parking is available for commercial uses, which isn't the case in most other commercial corridors. So some specific revisions. No parking requirements for any existing use were increased. City Attorney did point out to me that we did increase the parking for dance halls slightly, but we don't have any dance halls, so I don't think that's very relevant. The parking requirement stayed the same for some uses, but in many cases, they were reduced. We did introduce a maximum parking standard that limits the amount of paved parking provided to 200% of the code minimum. We actually had a chance to apply that to a new fast food restaurant that's looking at locating in the community, and they were providing in their site plan 43 parking stalls when the code only required them to provide 18. And they were really happy to hear that they could reduce it and didn't have to do all 43. They were probably using the standards from other communities, but they certainly thought that was an excessive number. So, so that's good. We encouraged developments with large parking lots for employees or customers to provide electrical vehicle charging and created specific locational criteria for those, made the process of approval for secondary drives and circular drives administrative rather than requiring Planning Commission action, trying to reduce some of those things in the Planning Commission agenda that we really can push down to a staff level and deal with adequately. And lastly, provided more flexible parking requirements for properties in the downtown general plan land use category, which is bigger than what we think of as our real downtown where it's B3, it's the general, general plan land use category actually goes a block or so north of Florence Boulevard. But we provided provisions for allowing parking requirements to be met through the use of on-street parking as well as public parking lots, generally exempted existing commercial buildings with less than 7,500 square feet of floor area from off-street parking requirements except for an accessible parking stall, and allow payments of an in-loo fee to reduce parking requirements in the cases where that might be appropriate. So that's a good overview of the changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this is a public hearing, although we didn't, the Planning Commission, excuse, the Planning Commission did consider this and voted to recommend approval to City Council of this, and they held a public hearing. And we actually had no, no public testimony at the Planning Commission. We had some public input provided in written form by a local engineer, but no public testimony.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Tice? Just one. Where did you get this picture?
You know, actually, Joe got it for me.
Joe found this one?
Joe found this one, yeah. I have no idea.
All right.
It's a piece of public art, I'd say.
That's what you do with excess parking lots.
I guess so.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, so I will open this up. This is item L1. And again, there's a resolution number 5428 and also ordinance number 1397.17.59. So this, I'll open the floor to any comments on either of those items. All right. Seeing no one jump up, then I'll close the public hearing portion, and I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5428. A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona declaring as public record a certain document pertaining to the city's parking and access requirements.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5428 as presented.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Next item is on this, under the same item number, L1, is consider approval of ordinance number 1397.17.59. Gloria, can I get a reading, please?
Ordinance number 1397.17.59. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona amending chapter 17.56 of the Casa Grande Municipal Code concerning parking and access, establishing the separability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1397.17.59 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Next item is item L2, another public hearing. This is on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2022-23 Final Budget and Property Tax Levy. Nga?
On May 16th, Mayor and Council adopted a tentative budget for the City of Casa Grande in the amount of $253,702,649. As required by statute, the tentative budget was published twice in the local paper, and a public hearing on the budget and tax levy is what is being asked to be considered this evening. The public hearing on the budget and tax will be the only action required tonight. The final budget represents all the information that has been presented to council to date. Following tonight's public hearing on the budget and the proposed primary and secondary tax levies, council will be asked to approve the final budget in a special meeting scheduled for July 5th, and will be asked to consider the first reading of the property tax levy at a regular council meeting on June 5th. As proposed and advertised, the primary property tax rate would decrease from $1.0148 cents per 100,000 of assessed value to $0.9643 per 100,000, per $100. The secondary tax rate, which is set to ensure that the city has sufficient funds to make payments on the bonded indebtedness approved by the voters, will be set at .3993 cents. As the Mayor and Council will recall, this rate is a decrease of .1709 cents from the prior year. Again, this item is a public hearing only.
Yeah, there's no action on this, correct? Just a public hearing. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the council on the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 final budget and property tax levy. So this is the open meeting. I will open the floor to any public comments or anyone who would like to address the council on this subject. All right. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll see you at next meeting. Okay. All right, then we'll move to item L3. This is also a public hearing, and this is considered ordinance number 1178.262.2. This is an amendment to the Marribella Planned Area Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Marribella Planned Area Development is being proposed to be amended. A little bit of background on this, and just so that you're familiar with the location, the Marribella PAD is located on the south side of McCartney Road, just south of the McCartney Center neighborhood. And the applicant is requesting to make two amendments. The first, to take a 25-acre area near the southwest corner of Palomino Parkway and McCartney and designate it for a medium-density build-for-rent community. And the second amendment would be to take the remaining single-family area and increase its density from what was 2.63 dwelling units per acre to 3.17 dwelling units per acre. So it would create around 251 single-family lots. Now, prior to the PAD amendment request coming in, these applicants had actually sought rezoning the single-family area to R1A, which would have enabled the lots to go smaller and narrower. However, staff encouraged the applicant to reconsider that request and instead apply for a PAD amendment utilizing the newly adopted PAD development standards. When reviewing planned area development amendments, these are the criteria that have to be addressed, and the staff report goes into these in more detail. I primarily want to talk about just a couple of them. Firstly, is conformance to the city's general plan. This area does fall within the neighborhood's general plan land use category, which does allow single-family residential or otherwise low-density residential up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. The area that's remaining single-family within Marribella, it's about 80 acres, they're going to result, it's going to result in a 3.17 dwelling unit per acre development, so well under the 4.5 maximum. Medium-density residential sites are allowed up to 10 dwelling units per acre so long as the site does not exceed 25 acres in size. So they are proposing a 25-acre area which was for single-family, but now will be designated with the approval of council as a medium-density residence, medium-density area to accommodate build-for-rent product. The other criteria that I want to talk about is conformance to the city's zoning ordinance. I noticed, I had advised previously that these are subject to the 2022 amendment to the 2021 residential design standards, and they are meeting all of those criteria. So no lot will be narrower than 50 feet, no lot will be smaller than 5,500 square feet, et cetera. Lastly, I want to talk about pedestrian and vehicular ingress and egress. So one advantage that Marribella has is it has a really good street network proposed. It involves the extension of Palomino Parkway, and that's the street identified in blue. It currently terminates at McCartney Road, but it would proceed south and southeast through the development, and it would ultimately tie into Hennessy Road to the south. The green line represents Arizola Road, and that would also extend from McCartney south. And on an upcoming screen, you'll see that there's a way for that road to go all the way to Rodeo. And the orange line that you see on the right is Tucker Road, which has the ability to extend and beat up and align potentially with the existing Tucker Road where it currently terminates with McCartney. Here's a broader view of how the overall street network will tie in. As you can see, Arizola has the ability to run alongside some other planned neighborhoods and can reach Rodeo Road. Regarding the public hearing efforts, it met, if not exceeded, those requirements set out by the city code. Staff did receive two inquiries, one by Tom Egert, the developer of the McCartney Center Neighborhood to the North. He had concerns about the development using the sewer line within McCartney Road. This development does not intend to use the McCartney sewer line. They're coming up with their own sewer solution, which would be the next phase of their development should their zone amendment get approved. They do plan to run a sewer parallel to McCartney over to Pier. The other inquiry received was from Bill and Jeff Knoll. They are owners of the property to the east of the site. They were just curious how this development might impact their site, and they had concerns about the fact that there wasn't any direct access to their site from Marribella. I'll show you on this screen, the Knoll property sits to the right of the site, and although this is an L-shaped property, if you could imagine the square that would complete that L, they, they do not have certificates of assured water supply, however, so it's likely that the Knoll property will develop for multifamily or for commercial. So it really wasn't appropriate to provide a connection from Marribella to this site, and they do have frontage along McCartney Road and the potential to access this road when Tucker gets extended, or access, better access once Tucker gets extended. Planning Commission heard this request back in May, and they voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval for this amendment to the Marribella PAD, subject to conditions that have been reflected in the staff report and the RCA. And that concludes the presentation.
James, if, if they are not going to run their sewer line down McCartney, where do they plan on running it? Or have you got that far?
So the plan right now, Councilmember Huddleston, is to work with the property owner to the west, and they are in conversations with that property owner. In fact, I've also met with that property owner with the Marribella developers, and they would be having to dedicate a sewer easement to the city. This property owner would also benefit from that sewer line as well, because whatever they propose for development, they likely would need to take their discharge into that line. It would probably run along the southern part of that property adjacent to the, the gas line. It's not really clear on this map, but it's that gap between the Mission Ranch development and the undeveloped land to the north.
Okay. And my follow-up question, are there limitations on how close to that gas line they can get with?
They would be completely outside of the gas line property, and that's a pretty wide piece of property, even though it looks narrow on the screen.
I think it's 300 feet.
It would be clear of that.
Pretty substantial. It's like 300 feet wide.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It has been. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, then, well, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. This is on ordinance number 1178.262.2, item L3 on our agenda. So is there anyone here who would like to address the council or staff on this particular item? All right. Seeing no one jump up, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.262.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona approving a major amendment to Marribella Planned Area Development, zoning adopted for property generally located south of McCartney Road, generally east of Arizola Road, and west of Old Hennessy Road alignment, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.262.2 as presented.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Moving along. Item L4, another public hearing, and considering ordinance number 1178.184.1, a major amendment to the Mission Ranch Planned Area Development.
So the Mission Ranch neighborhood lies to the south and west of the Marribella neighborhood that I just spoke about. But to better familiarize everyone with the exact location, the developed portion of Mission Ranch- the developed portion of Mission Ranch sits just off of Pier. LGI Homes purchased it about a year ago, and actually, every single lot has a building permit issued on it, and so it is nearing build-out on what's considered Phase 1. But there's a large portion of Mission Ranch that lies to the east of that area that has remained undeveloped. Although it is platted, there hasn't been any sort of public improvements to the east of the wash that you see on the screen. And it's specifically the Phase 2 area, the undeveloped area, that is subject to the proposed amendment. The applicant is requesting that Phase 2 be amended to increase its density for single-family residential development. But basically, that increase of density would go from 3.37 dwelling units per acre to 4 dwelling units per acre. As a whole, Mission Ranch was programmed to have 344 lots, but with the amendment, if approved, would go to approximately 411 lots. This is to take advantage of the newly adopted PAD residential design standards, which did allow for lots to be proposed slightly smaller than what was previously allowed. Just like with the Maribella PAD that I discussed in the last presentation, the applicant in this case also had first sought an R1A zoning, which would have allowed even smaller lots and narrower lots. But going with the newly adopted PAD standards is a good option, because it does allow it to be more compatible with the existing Phase 1 development to the west. When reviewing PAD amendments, we look at the criteria as shown here on the screen. I'm just going to talk about several of the highlighted items. Firstly, is conformance with the city's general plan. Like the other PAD neighborhood I discussed, this also is within the neighborhood's general plan, which allows a density up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density here will be 4 dwelling units per acre, so again, meeting that density maximum. Regarding conformance to the city's zoning ordinance, this does comply with the recently amended 2021 residential design standards. I do want to mention that with regard to the lot balance, where at least 25% of the lots are to be at least 6,500 square feet, in the case of Mission Ranch, that's being met by, in large part, by the existing developed portion of Mission Ranch, because most of the developed lots are actually the larger lots. And so they'll be utilizing the presence of those existing lots to meet this lot balance. And also with regard to vehicular ingress and egress, again, you can see how with this development, they'll be responsible for half-street dedication improvements to Arizona Road where it abuts their site. Mission Ranch 2 to the south also is currently undergoing its plating, where they're going to be dedicating and improving Arizona Road. So with Maribella to the north in short order, there will be a parallel roadway to Pier to provide good vehicular connection between Rodeo and McCartney. There is a condition which staff is recommending that a vehicular connection between Mission Ranch Phase 2 and Mission Ranch 2 to the south has to be provided. However, the exact alignment will be determined at the time of preliminary plat. That's just to ensure good vehicular connectivity within these local neighborhoods. Regarding the notification efforts, it met, if not exceeded, that which is required by city code, and staff did not receive any comments. Planning Commission did hear this and voted unanimously to recommend that council approve this PAD amendment to Mission Ranch, subject to four conditions, which have been covered within your RCA and within the Planning Commission staff report. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Yeah, Bob?
James, will any of this trigger improvements to Rodeo Road?
Councilmember Huddleston, in the case of Mission Ranch, it won't, because none of their development directly abuts Rodeo. However, Mission Ranch 2, which lies to the south, which just recently had its preliminary plat approved, does, is required to dedicate the half-street for Rodeo and improve it all the way from Arizona to Pier.
Okay, so we're looking at just Mission Ranch Phase 2, but not Mission Ranch 2?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing none, though, this is a public hearing, so this is an opportunity for the public to address council on this issue. This is regarding the amendment to the Mission Ranch Planned Area Development. Is there anyone here who would like to address council? Okay, then I will, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Powell, you have a question?
How, how are they handling the water issue?
They have a cause.
Councilmember Powell, Mayor McFarland is correct. This does have certificates of assured water supply. They're, one of their next steps is to submit a final plat where they're required to provide documentation from Arizona Department of Water Resources with regard to the number of certificates that they have.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then I will call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.184.1, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Mission Real Planned Area Development zoning adopted for property generally located east of Pier Road and north of Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1178.184.1 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item L5. This is to consider amendment to the City of Casa Grande's General Plan 2030 by removing the designation as a minor arterial roadway for rodeo, for portions of Rodeo Road. And I guess you're going to explain why.
Sure thing. Well, I want to say two things. Firstly, I'm giving you a break with zoning changes here.
Thank you.
But they're going to be resuming after this presentation. The second thing that I want to cover is that with our Casa Grande General Plan 2030, there's a wide list of amendments that are considered minor. And if they're a minor amendment, it does not have to go in front of Planning Commission and council just once a year, like major ones would have to. Minor can go to Planning Commission and council for consideration at any time. As such, changing a roadway classification is considered a minor amendment. So you don't have to wait for a yearly event to consider this type of amendment. But with regard to the request tonight, in the General Plan 2030, there is a planned roadway network map, and you'll see that Rodeo Road is identified on it as a minor arterial road. Here's a close-up of where Rodeo is planned to run. It starts at Burris Road to the west, and it runs basically to the Henness Road alignment just west of I-10, and then picks up again on the east side of I-10 from, I believe that's Hacienda Road over to Toltec Butts Road. The request this evening would change the roadway designation for portions of Rodeo Road. Not Rodeo Road in its entirety, but the area highlighted in yellow would go from minor arterial to major collector. So basically, its bookends would be revised from minor arterial to major collector, keeping the center part of Rodeo between Pinell and Pier as a minor arterial. Minor arterial roadways are designated as a 110-foot planned right-of-way, and it's considered a high-capacity road intended to deliver traffic from collector roads to other minor and principal arterial roadways. Some examples of minor arterials in the community include Treacle and Cottonwood Lane. Here's a street view of Cottonwood Lane, where you could see that within 110 feet of dedicated right-of-way, you have two lanes in each direction, a center median, whether it be a landscape median or a painted one used for turn lanes, a detached sidewalk, and bike lanes. A major collector roadway is planned as a width of 80 feet. It's considered a medium-capacity road intended to deliver traffic from local roads to arterial roads. Examples of collector roadways include McMurray and Pueblo. And here's a street view of Pueblo Drive, where you see it's one lane in each direction, bike lanes, and there is still a center median that could technically be landscaped or striped and used for either a two-way left-turn lane or when there's the need for a dedicated left-turn lane, there's space in the center to provide that. The reason why this request is involving the far west and far east ends of Rodeo is because we've determined that west of Pinell and east of Pier, Rodeo really isn't seen in well into the future to need to carry the type of traffic necessary for it to warrant being a minor arterial road. Staff had consulted with Wilson and Company, and they took a look at the vehicular capacity for a major collector road. And major collector roads within the city basically are designed to handle 15,000 vehicles per day. It's estimated that on these sections of Rodeo, west of Pinell and east of Pier, by 2050, the daily volume for Rodeo Road in those areas will be well under 15,000. West of Pinell, it's seen to have 1,500 vehicle trips per day by 2050, and east of Pier, it's seen to have 8,700. So in both instances, it can be accommodated by a major collector road. It isn't necessary for those stretches to be minor arterial. Both of those portions of roadway would provide sufficient capacity. And some benefits of doing that is it would result in less land that would have to be dedicated as public right-of-way, so the developer can hold on to some additional land for development. They'd only have to dedicate 40 feet of half-street versus 55. And so it would lower the private sector development costs, and it would ultimately reduce the city maintenance costs, because once the road's conveyed to the city, the city would only be responsible for maintaining a two-lane road versus a four-lane road, where it's appropriate, where there's not going to be the, the capacity that warrants a four-lane road. Ultimately, the reduced roadway width will lead to less stormwater runoff. It would reduce the urban heat island effect. And there also comes with this less restrictive access standards. As you saw in the presentation earlier this evening, minor arterials are subject to more restrictive access standards, and it really wouldn't be appropriate to apply, to apply those same access standards to these ends of Rodeo, where these, these stretches of Rodeo are anticipated to see a high volume of traffic. Staff did send out notification regarding this proposed revision to the general plan, including mailing notice to properties north and south of the planned rodeo alignments, west of Pinell and east of Pier. However, we received no comments. At a vote of 6-0 in May, Planning Commission did vote to forward to city council a recommendation to approve this minor general plan amendment. And that concludes my presentation.
I've been on that freeway the left there. It was just there.
Where's that?
We're getting some weird pictures tonight.
It's a mess. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Powell?
The Rodeo Road goes down to Burris, and it will probably end up going further than that. It's going to probably need to be a four-lane at some point in time.
Think it could get past the mine? I don't think it'll get past the mine.
What's that?
I don't think it can get past the mine.
They can go. But the, the city bought 100 and, I forget how many acres it was.
130?
It was west of where they are now. And, and that can go all the way up to the wash until it's federal ground up there. But it, it would really be beneficial. The thing we don't have is somebody back in that area that wants to go up to one of the more northern roads, and they don't exist.
Okay. Do you have a question for him, or just a statement?
Well, I have just a statement. I mean, I don't know what they're planning to do, but you're going to probably need to plan for a four, four-lane highway with, with that being, there's a lot of things going on right in that portion by the rodeo grounds, with different sports. The golf course is just right across the field from it, and they basically did end right now at Burris.
No, it doesn't go all the way to Burris either.
If you want to be on the dirt, it does.
Oh, okay. Not paved.
No, it's not paved.
It's my street.
That's your street?
Yeah, Rodeo's my street.
Well, good, take good care of it.
It's where I live. Any other comments or questions? We can always change it back, right?
Yeah.
Realistically, it's, it's different. It's difficult to change it back, because we're already getting the right-of-way for collector. But I can say this, I can say that the current plan, can you go to the one James, who shows the terminus of rodeo? The current plan for our 2030 general plan is for Rodeo not to go west of Burris. We have Cortson going west of Burris, McCartney going west of Burris. We, we don't, we haven't planned for Rodeo to go west of Burris. And maybe more importantly, we've actually programmed that Wilson analysis that we, we looked at how much traffic we're going to be potentially putting on rodeo between Pinell and Burris, anticipated full build-out of the property north and south of rodeo, and how much traffic would be placed on rodeo. And as you can see, the number was 6,000 trips, where the collector can handle 15,000. So we have plenty of capacity to handle the traffic from all the new developments that might be happening north and south of rodeo between Pinell and Burris as a collector.
But you don't have any problem with it going to a four, four-lane as it develops?
We don't think it would need that, Mr. Powell, Councilman Powell. The, at full build-out, we think that two lanes at a collector with a middle turn lane is more than adequate to handle all anticipated traffic.
Connectivity between, from Pinell to the west... Connectivity between, from Pinell to the west is not good. You run into a lot of other different roads and whatever. And as I say, there's some land in there that people own that they want to develop, so don't take that off the chalkboard and just... As I say, with the... A lot of people, when they come in with horse trailers and that type of thing, you need a big parking area. They want to get along the streets, and it just needs to be looked into. Right, Mayor?
I think the collectors are going to be McCartney and Cortson. Those would be your major east-west roads.
No, not for rodeo grounds.
Miss, go ahead, Bob.
James, if... This is a lengthy question. The homes that are built on rodeo, the old Rancho Grande between Colorado and Amarillo, appear to be built closer to the center line than what a minor arterial would demand. If that's the case, what happens when the land south of there develops? Will they be required to designate more of right-of-way space so that it can maintain the proper width of minor arterial, or...
Correct. Yes. In fact, the proposed development to the south of Rancho Grande has within it zoning that they're required to do beyond the typical half-street dedication to effectively make that area on the north side of rodeo road serve as like a frontage road. And then basically, the actual true arterial road would start south of that frontage road to carry traffic as designated per the minor arterial profile.
Let's not make any decisions until we talk with the people that own the rodeo property.
Rodeo, that's the city.
No, it's not. Well, the city land is there, but it's the West Pinell Sheriff's posse that...
They don't own it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Hey, what, you don't own the damn golf club either?
No, I don't. The city does. The citizens do.
So, but you still want good streets to get there with.
Of course.
Yeah. Well, we do too at the rodeo grounds.
All right. Okay. Any other comments from staff, or not staff, from City Council? All right. Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I will open the hearing to the public. This is regarding the change in the designation for rodeo road in two sections. One is west of Pinell, and the other is east of Peert. All the stuff in between stays the same, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public? I've opened the public hearing. Sure. You have to come up front if you're going to ask a question. Yes, sir. Sorry. Can you give it a microphone, Larry? Just state your name. It's a public hearing, Bruno, so hang on. We have a procedure. Hold on. Just state your name and your address again for the record.
Yeah, Bruno Colanci, at 85122, the zip code. But anyway, the question I have was the analysis you did on the 2050 analysis for traffic. At the present... Well, I don't believe this present development is going to, you know, hear that we're developing houses, but McCartney has become a big feeder into the highway, you know, the freeway. So, I mean, I'm starting to see a surge in traffic over there. So when you came up with your analysis, you know, on Treacle and I guess Perth Road?
This is specific to rodeo road. That's the only thing we're talking about here is rodeo road.
Okay. But rodeo is now... I'm trying to get the terminology. Is that a... It's not a feeder. It's a...
A minor arterial.
Minor. But inevitably, rodeo, I believe, feeds into one like Treacle and all those places, right?
Goes by it.
So, but we're only handling the development that we're talking about, not other development in any other place, right? Is that what you're saying?
So, you're correct that rodeo does handle quite a bit of traffic right now, but in the area that it's been largely already developed, which lies in between Peert and Pinell, and that's not going to change, because it is important that that stay a minor arterial, that it does need to be that in particular, because it is there to help distribute traffic between those two major north-south roads.
Okay.
But what Wilson and Company consultants looked at was the proposed development between now and 2050, and whether it be necessary for rodeo west of Peert, or excuse me, west of Pinell and east of Peert, whether it was important to continue to be a minor arterial. And although there is a lot of planned development in those areas, west of Pinell and east of Peert, that traffic can be accommodated on other nearby east-west arterial roads such as McCartney, because where McCartney's currently built isn't where it's limited to. It has plans to extend further to the west, and it has plans to be widened as additional development happens. Same thing with Cortson. So the Wilson and Company study found that the future conditions for both Cortson and McCartney and the other nearby streets could accommodate the traffic flow in lieu of rodeo being a minor arterial in those locations.
So out of curiosity, what are we expecting to grow by what capacity percentage in that area over there?
I don't have the specific population count for that area, but by 2050, the estimated population of the city is... I'm going to defer to Paul here.
Double our current population is what we estimate at. So we have a good sense of what the land uses are and how much traffic each of those land uses generated, that we plug those into our traffic model to understand whether or not we had capacity to handle that traffic, and we have more than adequate capacity.
Okay. 120,000, you said? About? Yeah, because we're becoming a, I guess, a bedroom community for Phoenix, right?
No.
No?
No, that's just because of jobs we have here. So let's... I'd like to keep this on subject here, where this is for rodeo road and redesignating those two sections of rodeo. So thank you for your comments.
Mayor?
Yes, Bob?
I have another question. James, this kind of goes along with what Mr. Powell is pointing out. And my question is going to be, how would we handle the transition from the two different road types at Pinell and therefore west of Pinell? Would that intersection continue as a five-lane in all directions intersection, or would it narrow at the intersection or immediately thereafter? Because I do agree with Mr. Powell that there's a lot of activity planned for right in that immediate area. I mean, we've discussed the fire station going there. We've added property to the rodeo grounds area, and event traffic and fire station, I don't know how quickly that would narrow down.
So I think I can say two things about that. First is that regardless of the change in roadway designation, anything that develops west of Pinell would still have to submit for some sort of traffic study or traffic impact analysis. So if there's a need for a turn lane, et cetera, that goes beyond the standard dedication of 40 feet, if it were to be designated as collector, they would be obligated to accommodate for that if that was necessary by the traffic report to mitigate the traffic. The other question with regard to how would that transition happen, would it happen at the intersection, just past it? I think there's a couple of options. I think that, you know, the city traffic engineer could probably best speak to that. But I took it to this slide for a reason, because on the top is a minor arterial, on the bottom is the major collector. If you were to do it right at the intersection, you could probably achieve that transition by changing the striping and designating one lane to be a through lane and the other lane to be a, you know, right turn only or left turn only, however the alignment would work.
Yeah, and rodeo today at Pinell has the same exact configuration, and it transitions to a four-lane across on the other side of Pinell, going to the west. So it transitions today. The difference is that if on the rodeo side, it doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't have bike lanes, so it would have to be wider than it is today. There's a bigger footprint that will be there when development happens. So when the fire station comes in and the development comes in on the south side, it will be wider than it is today. So there will be more space, more room there for cars, for traffic. It still can handle a lot of traffic.
Well, one of the things going back to, again, is Cortson Road. You can't connect with rodeo road with Cortson where it is. It's got development in between. You've got the...
Yeah, the only connection's going to be Burris.
Well, Burris is down right now, or...
But that's in the future, right there. That would be a connection.
Some of the development that might be going up higher than what you're looking at might need some way to get... You need to look at this.
All right. So any other comments? I closed the public hearing. So I'm going to call for the question, though. I need a resolution number, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.3, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030 by removing the designation as a minor arterial roadway for those portions of rodeo road, west of Pinell Avenue, and east of Peert Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 5273.3 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
No, no, no.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
There'll be a lot of changes going on right in that area.
It'll be okay.
It's okay if they get that road wider.
All right. Next item is L6, also another public hearing. And can we talk about both these together, L6? Is it possible? Or do they need to be separated in terms of a discussion?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I think you certainly have a presentation from staff on both, but you're going to need to have two separate public hearings, because they are separate rezonings, as well as two separate votes.
Okay. Is that okay with staff? Or is it easier to separate them?
Mr. Mayor, we've actually really reduced these to like six slides to make them go very quick. So I think it'd probably be best to...
Keep them separate?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
All right. Nope, that's fine. So then we'll take item L6.
So this is a request for a zone change from Urban Ranch to B4. The location of the property is along the south side of Hannah Road, right next to the I-8, I-10 interchange. It's about seven acres of property, and it's zoned Urban Ranch now, but that's really considered a holding zone. It was probably never intended to develop as an Urban Ranch property, which is designed to accommodate single-family residential on lots no smaller than acre and a quarter. Because of the general plan designation that it's in, it really does lend itself to become a non-residential zone. The B4 zone that's being requested accommodates a wide variety of uses, basically what's considered heavy commercial and light industrial use types. When reviewing zone changes, there's three criteria that have to get looked at, and they all three have to deal, do with the city's general plan and its compliance with the general plan. So as I mentioned, the subject site lies within the Commerce and Business General Plan area, where B4 is considered an appropriate zone district. And then as far as goals and action steps, one such goal of the Commerce and Business category is to develop economically competitive regional centers of commercial activity. And to do that, you do that by promoting a wider range of uses than traditional commercial areas. So B4 will help accommodate that, because it does help blend potentially a site that can have commercial or industrial uses. Another criteria that we look at is a rezoning is considered to conform with the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities that are identified within the general plan. So for this criteria to really function, we'd have to apply this at the time of the major site plan submittal, and that would be the next step. If this were to be approved, once someone wishes to develop these seven acres with a B4 use, they would submit a major site plan, and it would be on that that we'd make sure that they have a maximum floor area ratio not to exceed .35, and that there's at least 10% of open space provided. Another thing that we look at is roadway dedications at the time of zoning. Hannah Road is classified as a major collector, and so hopefully if I gave everyone a quiz, you would know now that a major collector's 80 feet. So one of the aspects at the time of development is they'd be required to dedicate 40 feet of right-of-way. However, if the city were to need that for some sort of planned city investment project for Hannah, the condition allows that dedication to occur prior to development. The third criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary at this time. We consider B4 zoning appropriate right here. Because of its location right next to the I-10, I-8 interchange, this property's really kind of considered a, one of those southern gateway properties, where it's highly visible from the interchange. And so we felt that it was important to be B4 as opposed to a heavier industrial use. And as such, we recommend a list of conditions that really speak to basically how this will look from that interchange, so that it does speak well to being a property at our southern gateway. Regarding public notification, it met that which is required by code. Staff didn't receive any comments as a result of that notification. Planning Commission did hear this in May, and they voted unanimously to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve this zone change from Urban Ranch to B4, subject to the conditions set forth in the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions from Council?
Is anyone looking to develop this? Do you have any interest at this time, or no? Are you just kind of...
Councilmember Fitzgibbons, not specifically. The person who is the applicant for this zone change is possibly considering self-storage, but that's one of many uses that's possible here. Self-storage would be subject to a conditional use, but it really would just probably depend on the market. But it really would just probably depend on the market at the time that they actually go to develop.
So it's being considered by the landowner?
Correct.
Yeah. Any comments or questions? All right, it's a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing on item L6. Is there anyone here who would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Urban Ranch to Community Services on property generally located on the south side of Hannah Road, east of Interstate 10 and west of Sunland Gin Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.036.1 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is item L7. This is also a rezoning in the same area.
Correct. So this is a zone change from B4 to I-1, and it's by the same applicant. The property is currently zoned B4, and it lies just to the east of the site that you just looked at. This is 14 acres in size, and the request is to change the zoning to I-1. Whereas staff felt that B4 zoning was appropriate for the property to the west because it was closer to the interchange, in this case, because it's a little bit further east, it's a little larger, the I-1 zoning would be appropriate here. There's a broad list of uses allowed in the I-1 zone. Of course, any sort of development here would be subject to a major site plan that would be further reviewed by the Planning Commission. When reviewing zone changes, these are the criteria that get evaluated. This site, just like the last property, falls within the Commerce and Business General Plan land use designation, which allows I-1 zoning. And staff does consider the I-1 zoning appropriate because it does help achieve the goal to develop economically competitive regional centers for commercial activity. And one of the applicable elements is that community growth should be driven by industrial, corporate office, professional services, research and development, all uses that can be accommodated on I-1 zoned property. Also, just like with the last site, there's some elements of the general plan that we really can't apply until we have it in for review as a major site plan, but we would have to ensure that the maximum floor area ratio not exceed .35, and that at least 10% of open space be provided. And that would be so that it complies with the Commerce and Business land use designation. And again, there would be a requirement for 40 feet of right-of-way dedication for Hannah Staff does feel that a zone change to I-1 is appropriate and necessary here to serve this area of the city, particularly due to the fact that it is within close proximity to railroad and near the I-1 interchange. There are a number of conditions that staff is recommending, similar to the last zone change, because although this is a little bit further away from the interchange, it's still along the area that I consider the southern gateway. It's still in a highly visible area as traffic is merging from I-10 to I-8, or vice versa. And so these conditions just reflect some heightened development standards so that it appears in accordance with what we want the image for the city to be along the southern end of town. The notification process followed that which the city code requires, and we did not receive any comments. Planning Commission did hear this request at a previous meeting, and they did unanimously vote to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve this zone change from B4 to I-1. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah.
All right. All right, seeing none, then this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing and allow anyone in the audience to speak on this subject. This is on item L7. All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.395.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Community Services to Garden and Light on property generally located on the south side of Hannah Road, east of Interstate 10 and west of Sunland Gin Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.395.1 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. That kind of concludes most of tonight's business. We'll, we are gonna do reports here real quick, and I will start with you, Mr. Lavender.
I don't have much. I attended the Neighborhood Sustainability and Quality of Life meeting on June 8th, and the topic of conversation was the housing crisis that all the communities are feeling right now and looking for possible solutions.
Got it?
That's it?
Yep.
Gotcha, real quick. Just a couple of things. Jeff and the mayor and I did, I think, seven interviews today for boards and commissions, so we have a lot of interest coming up. Also, I just wanted to remind, Casgran Police Department is doing their community meetings. They've had one, we have four to go, and so I encourage people to get onto our website to find out where those meetings are taking place and the times. It gives the community an opportunity to really sit one-on-one with our officers and find out what's going on in their own neighborhood, so I encourage them to do that. And the mayor's reading club is looking for volunteers again. The new year is coming fast. It is the 25th anniversary for this program, and so...
Online, applications online?
Applications are online, and they can contact the library as well. And an early birthday wish to Lisa.
Oh, thanks.
Mr. Powell?
I've not had a good, a good time. My sister is ventilator. She has pneumonia. She's in a hospital right now, and I don't know that it looks very good, but...
I'm sorry to hear that.
It, that's one of the nice things about our church. We got a lot of prayers in there for last Sunday. But she's been here since 1951, and she's a baby, and she's still going, but I don't know for how long it's been said.
Been said, sorry to hear that. Okay, Lisa?
Hello, excuse the allergies. Just wanted to, you guys probably read that the city does have the intern program, so I was happy to see that we have seven interns. And so I would just want to thank the police department. It looks like we have someone there. The PIO Attorney's Office has two, economic development has one, city manager, finance, and the fire department. So, you know, we started with a couple interns, and I'm just happy to see that this is growing a little bit. It's a great experience for these young people to come in, so thank you for doing that. Wanted to comment also on the BEAT patrols. Yes, there's five patrols. You know, there's been people that are, you know, questioning, you know, asking questions about safety. Casgran and our police department is doing such great things, so I'm happy to see that they're having these meetings, which are bimonthly. And I know I'm in BEAT District Edward, so make sure you tell District Edward that I'm gonna be at the meeting. And my BEAT is on June 30th at Safeway from 4:30 to 6:30, but it's really easy to go on the website, the city's website, and if you put your address in, it'll tell you which BEAT you're in, and it'll tell you where the community meeting is going to be. So two-hour meetings, and it's one-on-one with the police department, and just kind of coming up, you know, asking questions and solutions on how to make our community safer. We had a meeting the other day, there's so much going on, I'm sure you guys, you know, with the homeless issues, so much going on, you can drive down the street, and I'm sure you're all with me, where your heart breaks when you see these people on the street when it's 110 degrees. So the homeless coalition as well, the faith, as well as the Faith Alliance are really trying, they're actually moving, a lot going on. But the Faith Alliance did have a meeting the other day, and we are working on, still working on the I-Help, which is the interfaith homeless emergency lodging program. This is something we've been working on for several years, and we're making a little inroad. We had a meeting the other day, and we have four to five churches that are expressing an interest. And so we're really hoping that this is something that we can do on a trial basis, where it's just overnight housing for, it's not gonna solve the homeless issue, but it actually takes care of a particular niche of the homeless that needs, you know, overnight, and since the churches have shelters in the evenings, they would be able to house there. So we're really excited to move forward, and we're hoping that this is gonna progress. Went to the meeting with, we had some depressing news at the Panal Alliance Act for Economic Growth on Water. You, well, you don't need to be there because you know how depressing it is talking about water, but, so of course, there was Grady Gammidge and Michael Pierce, you know, experts on water, pretty depressing news. But what I got out of it is they said, "Treat water like money." So just, you know, preserve it.
Like a bank account.
Like a bank account, yeah. So be cautious when you use it. And I think, yeah, I think that was it for me.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Bob?
Well, I also attended that luncheon, Lisa, Panal Alliance and Report on Water, and it was somewhat negative. They did reinforce, though, it is manageable, so there's a lot of people working on managing it and looking at alternative resources, Dick. On a lighter note, I went to, about 10 days ago, went to the Arizona Public Service Presentation at CAC on energy and planning, and that was very reassuring. APS is doing a good job of managing energy right now and on planning for the future. Walked away from it feeling very good about development and energy needs for the area. And compliments to Richard Welke, who was also in attendance, and really delved deep as far as economic development and industrial prospects, looking at the area and having some, some pretty detailed questions about energy availability. And so anyway, I was impressed. Thank you, Richard. I think that's all.
Mr. Powell, you had something you wanted to add?
Of course I do, thank you. The, on the 29th, we have a group of people that are gonna be getting together at Bedellins to sit down and look at bringing water down, like we talked about, in a pipe from Davenport, Iowa, to Rock Springs, Wyoming. It'd be a thousand miles. I've got two pipe fitters that are coming to the meeting to break us in, and some guys that are really, really sharp planners, and it, we've gotta do something. There's, those two reservoirs right now are gonna go to dust. I mean, they just, it's got, they're, they're at the bottom of the deal, they call it, you know, the...
Deadpool.
Deadpool, and it is becoming that. And there's only, there's only about one way they can get water back in there, and that's to bring it back up, and that's what the pipeline would do, and absorb the floodwater at least twice a year that hurt those Mississippi towns. And so we're really looking forward to that. We've been, talked to the crits over in Parker and quite a few other places around, and it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty nice, because if you come, you get a T-bone steak. So, it, as I say, the, the need for water is really, really serious, and the different things, one of the things that was interesting, they were talking about DSAL. And one of the ones that was really strongly against it was the Babbitt, who was, actually wrote the first ground rules when he was governor of Arizona. But as an example, he said, "You can buy an acre foot of water at one of the DSAL plants in California for $2,075 an acre foot." Or this group we're meeting with, the CAP, you can buy it for less than $200 from them, and that's, that's what, that's what we're looking at, is trying to get this thing going and get pipe layers, laying pipe, and bring some water. I mean, we've gotta bring some water out this way. So that's what I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Just to, I've got a few things myself. I also attended the Panal Alliance, the annual meeting, but we also recognized Mr. TJ Shope for helping us acquire $400 million in this year's budget for I-10 widening.
Yeah.
So that is a huge, huge deal. It also allowed us to then request a mega grant from the federal government of another 300 million to hopefully take us over the top in terms of the funding for that, that 26, around 20, depends on who you talk to, 23 or 26 miles between here and really the 202. So that's all great news, and thanks, thanks to TJ for all his hard work in helping us acquire those, those dollars. I also want to wish all the fathers out there Happy Father's Day. Was remiss in not doing that earlier, but I know it was yesterday, but we still want to thank all the dads out there for, for being there. And then I attended another meeting, it's called, it was sponsored by CAC, actually it was sponsored by Arizona At Work, not CAC, but it was at CAC, and it was called Challenging the Status Quo. And it's something that we're gonna probably do on a regular basis here in Panal County, where we get education and business, because we had Lucid there, we had Nicola there. We talked about how business and education and municipalities can work together to try and bring education forward here in Panal County. So it's a, it's an effort you're gonna see and hear more about. It's really about breaking the technology challenge that we have today and trying to make sure that we educate our young people in, in jobs, not just educate them, but educate them for jobs. And so we're gonna see more and more of that as we move forward. About half of our kids don't go on to college. We need to be working with 100% of the kids. So I think, I think it's a good effort, and I applaud Arizona At Work for actually kind of grabbing the bull by the horns and really putting us this forward. It was, it was an all-day event. It was well-attended, and like I said, I think you're gonna see more coming out of that group. This week, I'm attending the American Institute of Taiwan. It's a business, 55 business leaders who are coming to Phoenix, and they'll be at the ACA's office, Arizona Commerce Authority, and I've been invited to attend a reception with those 55 business leaders and the Taiwan delegation. So we have about four Taiwanese companies who will be here coming to Casagrande, so I felt it important... so I felt it important that I be there for that reception and to represent the city. So I'll let you know how that goes. I also attended the Marriott Community Meeting. If you know it or not, we were trying to build a Marriott at the Promenade Mall. And they're trying... They want to extend it one more floor. So the PAD out at the mall has a maximum...
Mayor.
Is this something we're gonna be talking about?
I'm not sure, but if it's a PAD amendment, you're likely gonna have to bring it before...
Never mind.
So you can't talk about it.
Just... Okay, never mind. I just wanted the public to know that they could come out in support of it. Am I safe there? Okay, forget it. Anyway, I attended it. It was a good meeting. We did talk to the community. End of story. I'm done.
He scared you. He scared you, did he?
Is there anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you.